That's a lot. For the actual, the first, we need to. Uh, I could, I would have to myself, you claim to be somebody else.
We're speaking.
Yeah. Dude. I feel this was just somebody who actually did.
We'll, we'll fix it. Uh, we'll give you a suggestion. But now it's both of us.
Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of Westminster Mayor and County. The council meets here at City Hall in the second and fourth of May, ladies and everyone. Please note that council doors open to the public here at City Hall are also available and screened live on the city's YouTube page developed the Community Media Center channel on the website. Now all we begin with, do every meeting with the clutch of the flag, all by one more side. My delivery is that the state of the United States of America and the Republic of which stands for my nation and of God in this law. Let's look at it for all. Thank you. As a courtesy, ladies and gentlemen, please take a moment to silence your cell phones or any other electronic devices you have equipped for light destruction. Thank you for your courtesy. We appreciate it. Tops of today's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available on the city's website um and the tops of the agenda. So those of you at the meeting, I think the worst of them in front of the room, I'm not sure if there is left, but they're worst on. So yeah. All right. Without objections, I'm going to change the order of the agenda a little bit so we can do a few house speech things and allow people to have the opportunity to filter in like partly a little challenging scene. Uh, we'll begin with the approval of the minutes. We have minutes for the meeting of the mayor and common council um work session on November eighteenth and the meeting of the mayor and county council on November twenty-fifth. There are a bunch of people who want those to approve, Mr. President. So a motion by Mr. Cavaci and a second by Ms. Gilroy. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have the ayes handling and the minutes are approved. Dr. Becker, what can you report?
Certainly, I can't say I'm a little excited. There's, the room is not usually full when I give my report. Anyway, um, I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving uh since the last time we were here at a council meeting. And I just wanted to touch on a few things regarding our last two meetings. Uh, first of all, thank you to everyone who came out uh to our Miracle on Main Street holiday event. Uh, the holiday parade was one of the coldest that I have personally experienced. And I wanted to say a special thank you to the St. John's Chumans Choir and the Westminster Municipal Band for sticking it out through the parade and their tree lighting. Um, even though we were all frozen, by the time the tree was lit, the lighting on the tree was still magical.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, kudos to the, the part, to all the departments of the city. Um, they, all of our departments work together in creating what we have. It's a wonderful downtown that celebrates the spirit of Christmas. Um, with the addition of the skating rink on Saturdays, the holiday weekends are even busier. Um, from my engagement uh in the community, residents feel welcome in the city. They have reached out to me about the skating rinks, the lights, the activities that we've been able to do this holiday season. Um, and I had just received the message the other day that ended with, thank you for making the city for all of us. Small Business Saturday was busy in town. I stopped by the Shepherd's Staffs Festival of Trees, the Art Center Festival of wreaths and HSP's gingerbread houses. In addition to shopping in town on Small Business Saturday, I also visited the Carroll County Historical Society's Holiday's O- Holiday Open House. They had a wonderful display of Gold Star Trees, which I am pretty sure are still on display in the historical society that honor Carroll County residents that gave the ultimate sacrifice. On Tuesday, December third, myself and the council had our yearly breakfast with the leadership of McDaniel College. These yearly breakfasts allow us to have a sit down and not only catch up on the big picture happenings between the city and the college, but also provides us with a little time to socialize and catch up with one another. I was excited to hear about the growth of the nursing program, the large number of applications received to date and the development of some new programs. On Wednesday evening, we had our annual dinner with our state delegation where we review our successes from the previous year and outline our plans for this next coming year. I'm incredibly thankful to have such a supportive delegation for Westminster. They have supported us monetarily with the clock tower restoration and with Wakefield Valley redevelopment. And we, and have also supported us through the legislature with our fiber fund requests and our Pure Water Westminster project. Even though this isn't directly related to the city of Westminster, over the weekend, I took a little time to tour local artists in the annual uh Carroll County Artist Studio Tour. Um, there are numerous locations in Westminster where you can purchase locally made artworks such as Off Track Art and um the Carroll County Art Center. Um, and so do check those out if you're in town. And on that note, we have about two weeks to Christmas. So don't forget, Main Street parking is free through the holidays and there's a lot of great shopping downtown, lights to stroll underneath, the skate rink on Saturdays, carriage rides, visit with Santa. That's a lot. That's it, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mary Becker. Appreciate it very much. And uh not a busy couple of weeks, am I?
Yeah, yeah, a little slow.
Is that true?
A little slow.
Let's uh.
Who am I kidding?
Let's do one more thing and hopefully people will all be nearby then again. Um. He was nodding softly. That's a living thing. We'll begin with our report from our ladies on to the Carroll County Arts Council. Thank you.
We have the annual Festival of Rudy's um taking place. It's been extremely well attended and getting lots of folks to attend. Thank you for the program.
All right. Thank you. I should, but these are reports from our committees and other assignments. Um, Mr. Hoff, the Economic and Community Development Committee.
I have nothing to report tonight, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hoff. Um. Uh, on behalf of Finance Committee, our reporter, we met last week and discussed a number of contractual items before the city. Uh, we'll report on those. I have nothing to report with Personnel Committee, Public Safety, Mr. Cavaci.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Westminster Police Department filled the second vacant dispatch position with a new hire, Kayla Plin- Plinson. Um, she's an emergency dispatcher or was an emergency dispatcher from Adams County, Pennsylvania, nine-one-one. So she comes to us with some good experience and she starts her employment next week. So that's great news. Chief Ledwell and Captain Schuster attended the quarterly police accountability board meeting on December second where Chief Ledwell briefed the board regarding the Westminster Police Department's fourth quarter statistics. On December fifth, members of the Westminster Police Department attended the annual Catherine's Clause Remembrance Ceremony to remember those killed in traffic collisions in Carroll County. Catherine's Clause, uh, if, if you're not, if you're not familiar with it, is an anti-drunk driving organization and it really kind of took the helm for that. Uh, once mad, left Carroll County. They, they do a very nice job making sure that, you know, the, the attention's paying to drunk driving here in Carroll. They reach out, do a lot of reach out and a lot of recognition for police departments of the county. So grateful for that. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Uh, Public Works, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, yes. In addition to their normal jobs of helping maintain our city, um, our Public Works Department worked at the preparation of the Miracle on Main event along with the cleanup after the Miracle on Main event. Um, they have set up the um downtown city park with the city park light show and um are now getting ready for snow removal equipment and getting those calibrated and ready to address any snow that we might just see this year. Fingers crossed. Maybe snow will. That's all for it, but only during the workday. Oh, I don't know. I can take the workday. I'm fine with that. Um, that's all I have for Public Works.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. I, for recreational parks.
I do. I have a kind of lengthy report. Um, so this year we had a thirty-two new entries to the parade. There were eighty-seven parade entries altogether, which accounts for the two-hour parade. I'm counting for six thousand.
Very tall.
Two-hour parade, yeah, accounting for the six thousand six hundred and fifty-three feet or one point two-six miles of space needed to line everyone up. The parade lineup consisted of various car clubs, emergency vehicles, walking groups, thirty-two floats, which required fifty-eight batteries and inverters to illuminate those entries. This was in comparison to two thousand and twenty-three, where we had seventy-eight total parade entries and twenty-eight floats. Um, so I also wanted to remind everyone to take some time to visit our Magical Miracle Main Celebration. You can um still experience holiday magic in downtown Westminster on Saturday through December. Um, you could visit Santa, as the mayor has stated, skate at the local um Locust Lane and enjoy three horse drawn carriages from twelve to four every Saturday, um, the fourteenth and the twenty-first still remaining. Um, and the um, the bands that will be on the stage will be Westminster Elementary School and Sunday Night Big Band. And the Westminster Elementary will be there on the fourteenth from twelve to two. And Sunday Night Big Band will be on the stage from just, on December twenty-first from one to three. Um, and that's the library stage. And that's why I have her secret uh heart somewhere.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert, and uh Technology Committee, Mr. Dayhoff.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. All right. So I think we've now given enough time that we can move on with the normal, look, videos, um, so we'll begin with presentations now and we'll turn to that. The mayor.
Thank you. Um, so bear with me. All right, um. So it's the season of giving, so tonight I have the pleasure of giving back to the organizations and businesses that have supported the city's events in various capacities. First, I'd like to recognize our valued community partners that made Fall Fest twenty twenty-four possible. Fall Fest is Westminster's longest-running special event and Carroll County's largest community charity event. Celebrating its forty-fifth year, Fall Fest highlights Westminster's community spirit by providing benefits for nonprofit organizations serving Westminster and the surrounding communities. This proud tradition would not be possible without our community partners' dedication and volunteer support. In January of this year, three nonprofit partners were selected through an application and interview process. Once selected, the community partners are tasked with various event-related details and due dates. Partners must attend monthly meetings to discuss progress, challenges and triumphs, while recruiting and scheduling eight volunteers an hour for every hour Fall Fest operates. This evening, Crossroads Church, Find Your Purpose and the Westminster Municipal Band are the community partners receiving donation checks. Although the weather was challenging again this year, it did not dampen the spirits of our partners' dedication and volunteer sport, support. So at this time, I would like to recognize the following individuals for their outstanding work and tireless efforts, not only to Fall Fest, but also to the people they serve and the lives they impact. Crossroads Church, Beth Pruitt, Westminster Campus Administrator and Steph Albright, Missions and Outreach Director. From Find Your Purpose, Billy Live, Executive Director. Oh, okay. Executive Director. Uh, London Nicole Pettis, Program Director and Riley Bender, Assistant Program Director. And from the Westminster Municipal Band, Kay Smith, Financial Guru and Linda Herman, Volunteer Reader Extraordinaire. Each community partner will receive a money contribution from the proceeds of Fall Fest for their hard work. And this amount, the year is, the amount is. Ready? Yep. Eight hundred, forty-three hundred dollars. Beth and Steph with us from Crossroads Church. So. And you guys have been a community partner for a long time.
Yeah, we love it. We do love it.
The um Celtic Cantor as well, you're there all the time too.
Five, okay.
Point, point, yeah. That's what we're talking about. They started the point with five, yeah. Um, which the council loves. That's our event of the year. So uh, would you like to say anything before um you head out?
Um, we just love being a part of this community and we just um appreciate you all for letting us be a part of it and um coming alongside us as we serve um the community. We just love that um you all provide such a cool family fun event, creating memories for what Westminster is. So thank you. Let's be a part of it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
So next I'd like to invite uh Billy Live, uh London Nicole Pettis and Riley Bender from Find Your Purpose to receive. Oh, and Vicki Slate, man, sorry. She was pure late addition to receive their check. Come on up, guys. Alright, and your check amount this year is forty-three hundred dollars. You guys like to say something on about Find Your Purpose?
I mean, yeah, absolutely. Um, we've been here for about, well, we've been there my whole life, but we've been active for about a little over two years now. It's been like a really, really cool experience getting to work with like all the downtown businesses, the other nonprofits and really making a name for ourselves up here. And, um, we're really appreciative for, uh, the city of Westminster, so thank you.
Cause you want to talk school? Congratulations. Right, and lastly, I'd like to invite up from the Westminster Municipal Band, Kay Smith and Linda Herman. Yep, and this year the check amount is for forty-three hundred dollars. My favorite things about life. Would you like to say something on behalf of the?
We always much appreciate the opportunity to participate in this event. It's very much fun.
Wonderful. Thank you. Alright, congratulations. On behalf of the entire city council, I'd like to thank all those at Fall Fest for making Fall Fest twenty twenty-four a huge success. It would not have been possible without the support of our nonprofits. The next award. Right, the next award comes from the proceeds of a great Main Street event, Westminster Oyster Stroll. Held annually on the second Saturday in October, the Oyster Stroll is designed to raise awareness about the importance of aquaculture in the Chesapeake Bay. Attendees at this event are encouraged to stroll through downtown Westminster as they delight in fresh farm-raised oysters from the bay. However, if oysters aren't for you, there are still plenty of other things to enjoy, such as interactive children's activities, educational displays, giant yard games, delicious food, a variety of artisan and craft vendors, plus samples of wine, spirits, and beer. And live music is located throughout the stroll. This great event wouldn't be possible without the city's outstanding partnership with the Coastal Conservation Association. Would Mike Whistle, Central Region Chapter Vice President of the Coastal Conservation, please come to the front of the room? To say come to the side of. Ready? And so on behalf of the city of Westminster, I'd like to present this check to you for the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars.
They do an amazing job right now. That's, thank you guys.
Would you like to say anything before you run off?
I, I wanted to say that, but also, um, this helps with Carroll County Public Schools, thousands of school-aged fourth-grade students who actually build oyster reef balls that get put into the Chesapeake Bay and make new life and habitat. And so it's amazing hands-on experience for the kids and, um, so this is gonna help do more of that, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh, okay, I'm done. Oh, okay, sorry, okay. Sorry, uh, now I'm pleased to announce the winners of the twenty twenty-four Miracle on Main Street Electric Holiday Parade. A panel of three judges consisting of local business owners assessed each parade entry on the theme, detail, and brightness. The judges had a challenging job this year as this was a record-breaking year for parade entries, as Councilmember Gilbert had stated earlier. With eighty-seven entries, the competition was fierce. In recognition of the ordinary efforts from our parade entrants, we would like to acknowledge a few entries this year. With Jonathan Ben, Outdoor Events Coordinator for Girl Scout Troop twenty-three forty-three, please come over, please come to the front of the room, right? In recognition of the parade entry earning the title, "The Most Creative Holiday Theme." This is for you guys.
Thank you.
Alright, so we are going to, here.
I think you have some more coming around the back.
Oh, there's more? Oh, she's not in there. Okay, alright, so here, spread over this way.
Which way?
Here, call people in the back. We're gonna face Heather over there. Right here, just wanna hold it right, wait.
There you go.
Wait, you can, here, you're gonna hold this, okay? There you go.
We didn't know it.
That's alright. Alright, on the count of three, one, two, three. Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to say anything?
Oh, well, we certainly appreciate it. Thank you so much. We'll be back next year.
Next, the most well-lit walking group award goes to Savage Dance Company, um, and they cannot be with us tonight. Um, and so lastly, I'd like to present Dursdell Academy with the Best Newcomer Award. Oh. Okay, um, now on to our traditional award categories, Best and Brightest, Spirit of the Season, Main Street Champion, and The Heart of Westminster. All of our traditional award winners announced will receive a trophy and a one-hundred-dollar gift card. First, I would like to recognize Lynn Wimmer, owner of the Carroll County Veterinary Clinic, for their winning entry that earned the award for the best and brightest. You guys come over these. Thank you.
My goodness, it's bigger this year.
There you go. Like to say anything?
Thank you.
Uh, the next award goes to S and K Roofing, Siding, and Windows for their entry that best reflected the spirit of the season. Could Wendy, sorry, could Cindy Warren, Office Manager, please come forward to accept?
And you're going.
You're not Cindy. Oh, okay, back to her and I'm gonna. Alright, yeah, and the guys are gonna come back this way. We're gonna face.
Oh, okay.
Okay, up there, we're gonna put short people in front.
Oh, I see.
We're gonna face this way, right? We're gonna all get in here. And someone in the front is gonna hold this, so one of the girls, there we go. Just come back here a moment. We're all gonna. Okay, you ready? One, two, three, one, two, three. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, the Main Street Champion Award goes to Boy Scout Pack six thirty-one. Excepting tonight, we have Diana Hall, the VP Chair. There you go, you can hold that. It's storyboard. One, two, three. Would you like to say anything? Thank you, remember, for changing the parade. It's, our kids love it. And finally, I would like to ask George Sterling from Sterling Quality Water to please come to the front of the room. George is receiving the Heart of Westminster Award. Two, three. Would you like to say?
Uh, our theme this year was gnomes, so if you see the gnomes in front of our store, there's more to come. Wanna come and count them? I think the number's up to seventy.
So, uh, just a final big thank you to all of our twenty-twenty-old parade entries. The creativity, time, and attention to detail made this parade truly a miracle on Main Street. And the Electric Holiday Parade could not exist without their support and participation. Speaking of support, on the ha- on behalf of the city of Westminster, I'd like to extend our sincerest gratitude to Mark DiGasperi, owner of Interstate Battery, for his steadfast support of this phenomenal community event. Interstate Battery provides power sources for all electric parade entries. Interstate Battery staff members are available on-site at the parade lineup and disbandment to help illuminate and break down the roads safely. Many thanks to all of you and warm wishes for a holiday season. Not quite done. Uh, so now, it is my pleasure to announce the winners of the twenty twenty-four Mayor's Cup storefront and window holiday decoration contest. The Mayor's Cup is a longstanding contest recognizing the decorative storefronts and windows of downtown Westminster on display during the holiday season. Winning displays are recognized with Holiday Theme Award, with the Mayor's Cup being awarded to the best overall display. The Mayor's Cup is engraved with the name of the winner each year to be proudly displayed at the winning location. This year, twelve participants, up from nine last year and including four new participants, offered eye-grabbing entries and as always, making it difficult to select a winner. First, I would like. Sorry. So first I'd like to recognize the winners of the Holiday Theme Awards. The best classic display went to Rudolph Girls at nineteen Liberty Street. The best family-friendly display went to Magic at thirty-eight West Me- Main Street. Best inviting display went to Carroll County Public Library at fifty East Main Street. And the best festive display went to Sterling Water at seven East Main Street. The Mayor's Cup for the best overall display is awarded to Rock Salt Grill at sixty-five West Main Street. So, could you do a picture of two of them? Would you like to say anything or?
Thank you, guys. Me is the world. Thank you for, uh, accepting me in the new ownership of Rock Salt and just wanna continue growing what we've always done. Um, as you all know me, I'm Aaron. Uh, I was the executive chef of Rock Salt for years. I just purchased nine months ago and I appreciate y'all's support, so thank you all so much.
President, I'm done with that.
Alright, Mayor, thank you very much. And thanks to everybody for, uh, for joining us for that. I think it was, uh, hopefully you've enjoyed seeing all the wonderful awards. Now for part two of here. In the city of Westminster, public hearings are led by the mayor. We have two items here for public hearing this evening, and so I will turn the battle over to Mayor Becker.
So to start kind of this public hearing, it's secondary to the parties. Public hearing for Annexation seventy-eight, I'll call this public hearing order. Public hearing for Annexation seventy-eight, Annexation Resolution number twenty-four dash zero-nine, Annexation number seventy-eight, High Falcon Realty Corp., enlarging the corporate boundaries of the city of Westminster by annexing certain property containing plus or minus six point two four two-six acres, continuous to and adjoining the city's existing corporate boundaries, consisting of real property located at one thousand and one Baltimore Boulevard, Westminster, Maryland, two-one-one-five-seven, also identified as tax account number zero-seven dash zero-two-seven-six-two-one, MAP zero-zero-four-six, grid zero-zero-one-six, parcel zero-six-three-nine, and Annexation Plan Resolution number twenty-four dash ten, a resolution of the city of Westminster adopting the Annexation Plan for Annexation seventy-eight. There's anyone who would like to speak on Annexation seventy-eight? You may rise, state your name, uh, and address for the record. Hearing that no one would like to speak, I'll close this public hearing at seven thirty-two. On the next public hearing, it could order at seven thirty-two P M. Public hearing for Annexation eighty, Annexation Resolution number twenty-four dash zero-six, Annexation eighty, Maryland Home Builders LLC, enlarging the corporate boundaries of the city of Westminster by annexing into the property, by annexing into the city certain property containing plus or minus two point five zero-five acres, continuous N two as adjoining the city's existing corporate boundaries, consisting of real property located at fifty-four Ridge Road, Westminster, Maryland, two-one-one-five-seven, also identified as tax account number zero-seven dash zero-one-one-nine-eight-nine, MAP zero-zero-five-four, grid zero-zero-zero-six, parcel zero-one-six-seven, and Annexation Plan Resolution number twenty-four dash oh-seven, a resolution of the city of Westminster adopting the Annexation Plan for Annexation eighty. There's anyone who would like to be heard in this public hearing for this annexation? You may rise, state your name and address for the record. What? Oh, sorry, we're, Mr. Deep, but we're gonna start the queue.
Yeah, just briefly, I just wanna update you where the, where we've been in the process for this annexation application. As you recall, on September ninth, the Annexation Resolution twenty-four oh nine, where Annexation seventy-eight was introduced to the mayor of the council. On September tw- tenth, twenty twenty-four, the Annexation Resolution, along with Annexation Plan, pursuant to the Annotated Code of Maryland, was emailed to Carroll County. Additionally, hard copies were made available at the city Westminster Administrative Offices. On September tenth, twenty twenty-four, Carroll County Department of Planning forwarded via email Annexation Resolution in the plan to the Maryland Department of Planning pursuant to the Annotated Code of Maryland, the Maryland Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration, and certain Carroll County agency and departments. On October tenth, twenty twenty-four, the Maryland Department of Planning forwarded its review comments to the city. On October fifteenth, the Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission met to discuss Annexation seventy-eight. On October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, the Board of County Commissioners discussed Annexation seventy-eight and voted to provide a comment letter documenting their review process and comments. This is in provided attachment seven. And on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, the City Planning and Zoning Commission held the public hearing for Annexation seventy-eight. The Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded Annexation seventy-eight, including Annexation Resolution twenty-four oh nine and the Annexation Plan, um, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one, aren't I? I'm on eighty. I apologize. You guys skipped over eighty. I'm sorry. Let me set this over again. I apologize. On September twenty-third, the Annexation Resolution twenty-four. On September twenty-third, the annexation resolution twenty-four oh six and annexation number eighty was introduced to the mayor and common council. In September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, annexation resolution twenty-four oh six, along with annexation plan pursuant to the Annotation Code of Maryland, was emailed to Carroll County. Additional hard copies were made available at the city Westminster's administrative offices. On September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, the Carroll County Department of Planning forwarded via email annexation resolution twenty-four oh six and annexation plan to the Maryland Department of Planning pursuant to the Annotated Code of Maryland, Maryland Department of Transportation State Highway Administration, and certain Carroll County agencies and departments. On October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, the Maryland Department of Planning forwarded its review comments to the city. These are provided attachment four. On November sixth, twenty twenty-four, the Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission met to discuss annexation eighty. And then on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Board of County Commissioners discussed annexation eighty and voted to provide a comment letter documenting their review process and comments received. And that was provided attachment five. On November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, the city's Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on annexation eighty. The Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded annexation eighty, including annexation resolution twenty-four oh six and the annexation plan for annexation eighty to the city's mayor and common council with a favorable recommendation. Uh, staff would like to point out that the annexation plan provided with tonight's packet makes reference to a commercial use proposed at the property. During the initial discussion, um, with the petitioner prior to the annexation petitioner petition being submitted, there was a general discussion between staff and the petitioner of operating the bed and breakfast at the property. However, this is not the case. As stated in the staff report, both at the planning commission and tonight with the mayor and common council, there is a single structure existing at the property that was once in use as a single-family detached dwelling unit with a first-floor home of home medical office. The structure has been vacant for quite some time, and the petitioners proposed in the rehab the existing structure for a single-family detached dwelling unit. Staff recommends that the annexation plan be amended to remove any statement regarding a commercial use proposed at the property and state that the existing building at the property at one time was in use as a single-family detached dwelling unit, and that if such dwelling unit was to be reestablished at the property, the impact would be equal to that of the previous single-family detached use. And with that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Would you like me to? Yes, please. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kelly Schaefer Miller, seventy-three East Main Street, Westminster, Maryland, two-one-one-five-seven. Sorry. Where is?
You can stand right here.
Okay, I'm gonna stand right here. I'm welcome. So let me know. Um, so I'm just, uh, here to give a brief introduction on the background of this property. This, this was before we were introduction, went to planning commission more recently. So I'm not sure if you had the opportunity to review that meeting as well, but this is all the same information that was shared during that planning commission meeting. If anyone has the opportunity to review that. Uh, the request before you is to annex the subject property fifty-four Ridge Road from the, it is currently zoned R-ten in the county, and the request is to remain R-ten in the city's zoning district. This property is in the growth area and the priority funding area. It's also in the water and sewer service area. The master plan land use designation for this property is suburban residential, which is in conformance with the R-ten zoning as well. So that is also what's being requested in the city's R-ten zoning district. For all intents and purposes, this meets the policies of the city in terms of annexation. As you're all aware, any impetus for new water or sewer allocation is now the pol- it's the city's policy that one come if they're eligible and request annexation. This is something that's also reiterated in the town county agreement as well. So even if the city didn't request it, it's possible that if something was submitted to the county, the county might say, hey, you actually have to request annexation of the city. So what is before you tonight is a request for annexation and just that. We understand that if there's any subdivision plan, and that is, that is the intent. I have my client is here and she's available to answer any questions. We're happy to sit in here, but I didn't have to sit on the floor. So, um, I will bring her in if anybody has any, any specific questions of her, but I do, and we do intend to submit a subdivision plot that would have to go through full staff review and planning commission review. Nothing has been submitted. Layout has not even been finalized. She has hired an engineer to begin work on that, but that is where that is. It is the full intent, and this is what was testified to the planning commission, to maintain that historical structure. We understand that that house has great historical significance in the city and the county, even broader than that, I think. And so it is her intent to maintain that. She, um, it is experienced in renovations and has been working to who to restore the interior of that structure to its historical standing, if you will. Um, so again, I think Mr. Deep said this, but the intent is for that to maintain a single-family home. There had been a previous owner who had explored the potential for, for a bed and breakfast at one point. I'm not sure if that was still, you know, what was perhaps in Mr. Deep's mind with the commercial use. This is a new owner. Christina has purchased this one recently. Um, so things that you may have heard about past owner, it's now under different ownership. We are here happy to answer any questions that you have. I understand that there's going to be public comment. And we are here and here to listen to all of that. And we would also say to everyone that through the planning commission process as well, if mayor council is willing to approve this annexation, we look forward to everyone's participation in the planning commission process because this is really, if you will, the first step for this property. If anything happens with it, it's going to have to go through planning commission process. And that will be, uh, one to two, well, one to two public meetings at least, Mark, correct? Um, so we anticipate that we will hear comments tonight. We're going to note all of the comments, concerns that everyone has, and we also expect that people will remain engaged in the process if this is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anyone on the council who would like to ask questions? Um, I would, yeah. Um, Gilbert, so I've heard that you, that obviously you just stated that there's an intent to subdivide the property. Can you kind of describe to me what your envision of that would mean um, regarding plans for subdividing?
Yes, absolutely. Please keep in mind that everything that, like I said, there's been no formal supplemental made, and this is still in the engineering phase of things. So everything I share with you is very conceptual. Um, but what Ms. Landsman has explored is potential for four lots in addition to the one existing lot. So in this, the general, I mean, this is kind of a great, um, nutshell version, but R-ten in the county and R-ten in the city generally speak to ten, to divisioning ten thousand square foot lots. This property is about two and a half acres. So there are forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet in an acre. So if you do the math, oftentimes what you're going to find is that density is way above N B I. If you just do the math, what could realistically occur on a property? So I think what, what I'm saying to you is that if you do the math, R-ten is a lot more than right now what a concept plan is showing is realistic for this property and conforms with the surrounding area. So we will see what gets submitted, but right now that's the concept that she's working on and that the engineer is working on as well.
And the house is, at this point, remaining as a single-family house.
Yes.
And in this situation.
Yes.
I have one, uh, question as well. Um, I think you referenced the bed and breakfast idea, but that sounds like it was a previous owner. Has this owner given any consideration to such an idea? Just out of curiosity.
Quite frankly, Christina hadn't until it was raised at the planning commission meeting, and I think she shared there that it's something she'd be willing to explore. I don't know that she's in the business of managing, owning and operating a bed and breakfast, but she's not opposed to the idea. If there's a potential out there for that use, or if anybody here wants to run a bed and breakfast, uh, please come see us after the meeting. So I don't think it's off the table. It's not something she has direct experience in in running and operating. But yes, that had been previous owner after Dr. Bates, um, who had explored that potential with the county, actually. That's how this first meeting of light, um, that it would need to go through any annexation process for additional water and sewer needs would be that is because somebody else started exploring the potential for a different use on this property.
Actually, I have one more. I actually have one more question. So if you subdivide the property, how would you get to the homes on the back side? I'm just curious as to how, where the right of way would be for, for a road.
I think that the concept is showing a use in common driveway. The use in common driveway is currently what's
A loop that goes around on the front? A shared driveway.
Needs to be. I'm sorry, Christina, if you come in and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Christina Landsman, sixty-sixty-one Moore Drive, Dixville, Maryland, two-one-seventy-four.
So where would the, the common or the right of way for the, if you, if you were to subdivide it and I'm safely knowing the property, there would have to be a subdivision in the back. How would you get to those homes?
No, so the existing home is kind of front and center. It has a big kind of horseshoe driveway. That would all remain from the center. The existing driveway would remain as it is. The property is very large. The road frontage is, is pretty large. So, and it's actually right where the current water comes in at the street. Basically, there would be a driveway hugging. You know, if we have our, our, our rectangle lot here, we have our house in the center. The driveway would then hug the left side and then go back and access one, two, three, four houses that would sit off the road in the rear. And, yeah, so it would not be a loop. Um, it would just be one, one access point on the left side and then maintaining the integrity of the rest of the property uh, all in the front and the existing driveway.
Right. Anyone else on the council that would like to ask a question? Right, um, we're gonna move on to public comments. Um, I have the silent sheet that Mr. Barber, thank you, Mr. Barber, have collected. Um, so I'll give the names. You do not need to comment if you do not, uh, want to when I call your name. Um, just let me know, but I know several of you here this evening would like to comment. Um, just as a reminder, when we hold a, a public hearing like this, this is not an opportunity for discussion back and forth, uh, with the council. We are here to listen to your comments, um, related to this public hearing and to take them into consideration. Um, and I do ask respectfully, since there are so, so many individuals here, that, um, we keep our comments to about three minutes if possible. Um, so when I call your name, if you'd like to speak, please stand up, say your name and address, uh, for the record, um, and we'll go ahead. Um, Alan Ness?
I'd like to make a comment that I am probably uh, because of my age, but because of the property, we were the last house. And we were dirt road, built nineteen sixty-six, sixty-five, and then in sixty-six. My brother and I now, he resides in Fallston, Maryland. And I'd like to comment that we had a right of way to, uh, road that we could have found through to the Goni Terrace, where at sixty, we're at. And we maintained that for years, and some developer came in and decided to develop in behind. And, uh, basically the roadway turned to a common use driveway. And I still know that. I mean, I was supposed to have no expenses but use of the driveway. And make a long story short, um, they told me things like, I was cutting down their trees and different things. So I used a common driveway that's old. The neighbors kind of shot away from it. When you asked them for money, I clicked the stone in, and that was like four thousand dollars or so. And, uh, I maintained that F because I have use of it and that's what they claim. Well, we don't use it. You can have it all. You know, we give it to you. I said, you know, let's stall. Then they don't. Off, not off the record, but on the record, I had invited them to the church functions at Christmas time. Even in that year or something, something come up with them. So, anyway. My thing is, where were these cars parked? Because there's a road called Bridge Road. And, uh, I see a lot is Ridge Avenue now, which I'm confused on. But anyway, what to call it, but there is a, uh, meeting with Young Life, which is a good program. And they park in front of the Fitch House once a week on the road, Ridge Road, and across the street. And they're parked any which way facing the opposite direction of the law provides. And what I'm saying is, if something were to happen to anyone past that, um, ma- mansion and, you know, all that. Um, I can hardly get, I drove a old Lincoln Continental, and I could hardly get that through at a few miles an hour. Then I can imagine, pardon emergency vehicles, what, uh, trouble they would run into getting, even to me, to the timely matter. So, that would be, uh, you know, my statement that I'm opposed to, to major things.
Thank you, sir. Greg Field?
Um, Greg Field, forty-one Ridge Road.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Jen Socksdale?
Jen Socksdale, forty-eight Ridge Road. Um, I guess my major concern is that there was some talk about whether or not this was going to become city property in the end. And there was some rumor going around about a rehab facility potential. So that was probably my major concern for safety reasons. But also from our backyard, we would see all of these houses. So that's a big drawback. My family has lived there since this one. So, uh, yeah, we would rather not see, uh, former houses built there. And then I think they have some additional comments that would support mine as well. Thank you.
Miss Socksdale?
Um, Nancy Socksdale, and I'm curious, uh, where does the property lie in the city now? Because it says adjacent to current, um, city property. Is it, the house is down below on Fitzu?
Yes.
And, um, I too am concerned about the traffic because right now on the city part of West, uh, Bridge Road, uh, cars park on both sides and it's, uh, we have to stop and let the other cars come up, uh, to get through. So, um, I really would be in opposition to, uh, this adding four new houses up there plus the engine.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Socksdale? Thank you.
William Socksdale, forty-eight Ridge Road. Um, I too, um, thought I were looking at this property, uh, hoping to do like a boutique bed and breakfast, um, living up there, we wanted to be able to maintain, um, the mansion the way that it always has been. But we were told quickly that that would never, uh, be permitted. And for a couple of reasons. One was water. The other one was traffic and parking and traffic on this small road. I would say, although the road is, is probably a very good two-lane road because of the parking situation on either side, it's, it's, uh, really a one-lane road. There's only one lane that can pass back and forth up Ridge Road. So, um, traffic on the street, as I said, it's effectively a single-lane road. So the roads that are currently there, it's hard for me to imagine twenty more cars because you figure five residences, average two cars per residence. There's so many cars. And, sorry, ten cars, right? Ten cars. That wasn't my strong suit, sorry. Um, that's just an addition to the traffic that's already on the road. Concern also, I guess, why this couldn't be done outside of the city limits? Because there are houses that are outside of Westminster proper that have access to water and sewer. So does that mean that, um, it would allow additional compression of, um, uh, the development of properties in a subdivision, which we never thought that that property was going to turn into a subdivision. Um, when, when we talk about and hear that it stays within character of the other houses up there, I would challenge anybody to find a house on ten thousand square feet. You're not gonna find it on Ridge Road. Not on that section of Ridge Road. Maybe down, um, Maybe down um down by, what's it called, Western Orland? I'm not sure, but not in that section of Ridge Road. So um what I am concerned about is having somebody that has a business acumen that wants to come in. Quickly develop the property and go away. And then people like ourselves that have been there thirty-five years, several generations uh forevermore. The character of the of that Ridge Road has now changed. So that's what I'm voicing concern uh today.
Thank you. Um, Richard Davis?
No comment.
Thank you, sir. Gabrielle?
Cadu.
Cadu?
Cadu, yes, I'm like, um, okay. Um, uh, my name's Gabrielle Cadu. Hello.
I am, can you please give your address, sorry?
Yes, it's, well, fifty-two Ridge Road, um, with my grandparents Eugene and Eileen White. I'd say that my concerns echo those. You all did such a wonderful job, basically right down the line with everything that I wanted to discuss. Um, but my grandparents are directly next to the property, so at fifty-two and then fifty-four. So I can see. You know, I can see it right from the window. It's right outside. Traffic is a concern for me. Um, and then I'm like, not, I don't remember.
Uh, William.
William, as William mentioned, um, the traffic and then the city limits uh start with that. I think a lot of people are here to stop. So just getting more information, I guess, on what the plan for the property would be. Um, but I would say that I'm in opposition.
Thank you. Would you like to?
Hi, um, yes, I'm I'm gonna add a little to that.
You could just take your name and.
Eileen White. Um, fifty-two Ridge Road. Um, when we moved there, uh, we weren't in the city limits. We were fine with that. You know, nothing disturbed us about that. Um, what benefit is this gonna feed to the people on Ridge Road? Um, other than benefiting the um, the new contractor? Um, to think about four houses going behind the Beats property or the mansion, um. Still, if there's a driveway, you're gonna have still have a place to park cars. Where are they gonna park? And I guess I that's that's all for me, and I am against it.
Thank you.
Fifty-two Ridge, but you don't have enough room on the road now. You have to wait to get through. You have walkers on that road from sunup to sunset. But there's not room. I'm against it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Moose?
Alan Rowe, fifty-three Ridge Road. Uh, my wife Cindy and I live directly across the street uh from the subject property. Um, when we moved into our house, one of the questions that I have or would have. If if the property were to be subdivided with stormwater running off, we had. We did extensive work in our yard because we had about a ten-foot gully going down through the side of our yard. Just because of the driveway alone off of the the Fitzhugh Mansion property, just from the water runoff. So that's one of the concerns. The other can, other question in my mind is back and forth about annexation and you know, it it it's a residential property, at least that's what it sounds like. It's residential. And it's going to be, um, I'm assuming, um, a single family home. So the reason for annexing it into the city is to provide a more water allocation for the property or to be a single family home. Or that would be, I I guess, because there's a potential to build four more homes on that property. So I'm not sure where it goes. Uh, putting it in, annexing it in is definitely a signal that there is going to be more homes on that property to get the water. But I that's just, I just ask, you know, that's a question I have. And if that's the case, then uh, you know, then that that to me shows that there's uh a significant chance that there's going to be four more homes on that property. And by annexing it in, is that for the, if to give them that water allocation? That what that's, is that why you're annexing it in or is that, I know it's certainly going to increase the tax revenue with the property by who knows how many dollars a year, but that's just some of the questions that I have. But like I said, I think you're putting a driveway back in there, you're going to have four more homes back in there. With rain spouts and damp spouts and water pouring everywhere, how is that possible?
Are there other homes on Ridge Road?
This is, but excuse me, sir, this is not the case for discussion. Right, we're here to listen to your public comments. Thank you.
So I I'm just thinking about those things. That's a- a- and as mentioned, um, the the traffic through there. It's it's tight. It's a tight road all the way up Ridge Road and there's some, Mrs. Socksdale was saying. That cars down where the streets even wire, with cars on both sides of the streets. And every every day in and out of that, you have to pull off, let somebody come in, let somebody come out. And also I heard somebody, and it's true, there's there's more foot traffic on that street than probably any street in the town. Because people love, they love the views and I don't know. I just have, that's that's my fault.
Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Ruth?
I'm David Knight.
Oh, oh, well, that's for Mrs. Ruth. Would you like to say anything?
That's all right. Thank you. I'm Cindy Ruffin, fifty-three Ridge Road, and I concur with what my husband Alan has said. And we're very happy with the way it is. We'd love to see the Fitzhugh property be updated and be an individual home. But we're not looking for any additional homes to be added to that lovely area. There is no way there would be enough room for additional traffic coming through our community. We're very happy that we're still on the coming status. And uh, the additional stormwater management, the issues with traffic coming through there will be needs to be taken into consideration, even to consider annexing that into the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Day?
Yes, I'm with at fifty-seven Ridge Road and um all these people have um which concerns that I have as well. I think, you know, there's no uh through road in that area. And um because there's no through road in that area. The congestion just by the cars that people who live there, it's so congested. And if we add to the number of homes, it's even going to be uh very congested as well. So I'm really against having uh development or new homes. I would love to um have someone renovate it and turn it into to a residential home. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Alana Michael?
And I, Alana Michael, fifty-five Ridge Road, so I'm directly across from fifty-four. Um, and yeah, I agree with all the things that my neighbors are saying. Uh, we think the property across the street is beautiful. We'd love to see it stay that way and be renovated, but additional homes seem like they're suffering for it. They've all said it so well. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Battles?
Chris Battles, thirty-nine Fitzhugh Avenue, we're diagonally diagonally behind the property. Uh, I actually worked with my wife to kind of put more of a consolidated statement together, which I'll defer to her.
Angela Nicholas?
Yeah, I'm Angela Nicholas, I'm at thirty-nine Fitzhugh Avenue and um when I first heard about this, I really found myself conflicted about how I felt about this being annexed into the city. And I did a whole bunch of research. Um, I'm a lifelong resident and even though it looks like I'm really well prepared and this could take a while, it's gonna be less than three minutes, I promise. I'm here tonight because where I've landed in doing my research on this is that I do believe that the city of Westminster would be the best protector of the property. Um, and I'll get to my feelings about the subdivision in a moment, but um tonight mostly what I wanted to do is give a little input about how I hope this is handled going forward. So I know the conversation tonight is about annexation. I know there will be future opportunities to talk about subdivision. Um. I raised my twenty-year-old daughter in Westminster. When she was in high school, the thing to do if you got a date and you wanted to impress them was to go watch the Lee High Cement Company light up. Apparently, I never did this, but she did. But what I did in high school is we drove to what was called the top of Westminster and it was directly across from the Beats Mansion. And we watched the lights come up on either side because the view was that spectacular. And um a few years later, I was actually super excited for Dr. Beats to become my doctor because it meant I got to go inside the Beats Mansion. Um, and you know, at the time, I did not know that there was an oral tradition that had been passed on by the Fitzhugh family about a Civil War encampment in the backyard. Um, and I say backyard, but I'm gonna get to that in a minute and it's a really important point. I also didn't know this was the first hospital in Carroll County. And I definitely did not know that it was the first property in Carroll County that was wired for both electric and gas at the same time. Um, but what I did know at that time even was that I wanted to live at the top of Westminster in this beautiful, mature neighborhood. So when I purchased my home on Fitzhugh Avenue, Catty Corner and behind the Beats Mansion. I learned that what I called the top of Westminster was called Sunset Hill when Dr. Henry Fitzhugh, a general practitioner, built his home and his office at fifty-four Ridge Road in nineteen fifteen. Today, some people call it Fitzhugh House. So in fact, uh, you know, when Dr. Beats sold the home, if anybody looked at the listing for the most recent sale, the carriage is still there, the Dr. Fitzhugh. You're, I'm sorry, Dr. Beats sold the home, the carriage is still there, the Dr. Fitzhugh used to transport his patients in the early nineteen hundreds. Um, so when the current owner purchased the home, I was really happy to read her Facebook post that said that she would do as much as she could to keep the original details and charm as possible. It kind of gave me hope they would take this amazing property and do some updates because absolutely. Um, but to maintain the historical integrity. And the two points that I just mentioned to you, I learned from looking at the listing and from looking in Facebook. And the other thing that I've learned when I look at listings for properties that go on this for sale in this neighborhood is that the most common phrase that is used and maybe you don't necessarily responsible for this, I don't know, in the listings, is that this is, um, this neighborhood is always main selling point called out for being one of Westminster's most established and sought-after neighborhoods. That's probably why we live there too. Um, so when people choose to buy a home and make their biggest investment in this particular neighborhood, they're not just buying a house. They're buying into that right to live in a mature and a stable and an established and well-respected neighborhood, something that is desirable. So if the property is subdivided, I would ask the council to consider whether allowing subdivision to that degree would overdevelop the property. More than just, you know, the traffic issues, but would it result in layouts that aren't consistent with historical integrity? And the last thing I will say is that the front of the property is actually the back of the house. And so when you think about where they would be subdividing, what they would be doing is putting four houses in what would be the front of this historical home. Which I would argue is not in in line with the historical integrity of the house. So as you discuss the subdivision on Sunset Hill at the top of Westminster, I just add that you continue to exercise really thoughtful judgment. Um, really well-measured judgment about what we do, but I do believe that the city is the best protector. Because you're taking the time to listen to all of this and you understand the historical integrity that has come, you know, to build the character of the neighborhood, you know, over more than a century. So thank you.
Madam President, can I get your name again, please?
Angela Nicholas, N I C K, Alana.
Nicholas?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes, yeah, Beat Sabry.
Sabry?
Yes, it is um one Ridge Road, and my mom still lives.
Can you um stand up so we can hear you? Thank you, thank you.
Martina Beat Sabry. Um, I live in Manchester, but I was raised on one Ridge Road, Westminster. My mom still lives there. And no comment on the.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Paul New?
Paul New, thirty-five Fitzhugh. I wasn't going to speak, but now you got me jacked up. I guess in a nutshell, if everybody in the learning could hear that they would just wanna fix the place up and not put any houses in, they'd all be happy. Nobody, nobody would even be here. You know, if they said, hey, let's make it beautiful, keep it the way it is, no new houses, you wouldn't have anybody here. But the problem I see is you're the person that wants to come in and say on one hand, I wanna fix the place up and make it beautiful. But how can you do that if you had four houses to the back? So let's be fair, it's it's about money. You know, she wants to come in, she wants to fix the house up and she wants to add the additional houses to make money. So always I would ask is if you wanna make money, play the stock market or do something else. But don't, you know, come into a neighborhood with no intent of living there, put additional houses that stresses the neighborhood, takes away the beauty. And then we're left with it while they move on and they have their bank account fatter than it was, and who's the better for that? So I mean, it's great. Everybody wants to make money, but don't do it on the backs of others. But you wanna fix the place up, put houses there, we'd all be happy. But if you wanna come in and you wanna buy the house, fix it up, make believe that you're a part of the neighborhood and then turn around and plot four more houses, that doesn't benefit any of us. It benefits your bank account, but none of us. And I would note that in your notes that you said the DCPD was concerned about the potential of the density. So if you look up concerned, it means worried, troubled and anxious. So obviously, somebody in this board has a problem with it also. So I would just ask that, you know, this is a historical neighborhood, it's a beautiful house. Make the money off the house, make it pretty, sell it, take profit, move on. Don't put in four more houses. That's that's just totally wrong. I mean, come on, we all wanna live forever. We all wanna be rich, but there's morals, you know? Don't come in, trash up the neighborhood like they did down on Fitzway, drop fourteen houses at the end of our road. So what do you have? You have county, or I'm sorry, city, county, city. I I don't understand that. So now we have fourteen brand-new houses, people race up and down the road on Fitzhugh and down Fitzway because we have young kids, I get it. But now you've got all this chaos and you got old people sitting in the room. We just want a nice peaceful life. You know, we wanna be able to pull out on the road, somebody not run us over, wanna walk our dogs, we wanna talk to our neighbors. But let's face it, society now, people hardly even talk to anybody. So I just ask that you shoot it down. Don't let them put the four houses in. If they wanna fix the place up, make it pretty, great, love it, we all love it. Don't drop those four houses there. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. President? Um, yes, Cindy, very brief. Um, please, I'm rising, thirty-five Ridge Road. And I just wanted to take part of my three minutes to say thank you all for the processes that are in place that give us an opportunity to share our concerns. I echo the sentiments, the articulate sentiments out of my neighbors. I'm also very grateful and proud to be in this room with you guys. And it does sound like the process has started and it's at this stage now, but there're gonna be ample opportunities for all us all to have a reunion together. We should probably plan a progressive dinner or dinner afterwards, but it's great. Not the circumstances aren't wonderful, but it is incredible. I've been really proud being part of this community. So I echo the sentiments of everyone else in the room. Thank you, the process for us.
Thank you. Um, I just, or is that correct?
Yeah, I think I'm just gonna pass because I've really appreciated these comments. And while I've admired that Fitzhugh House, um, every time I'm taking a walk on the street, like every day, part of that walking group, um. I really just learned so much from you tonight, Angela. So thank you for that research.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Seidel?
Um, Debbie Seidel, thirty-seven Ridge Road. I I think my largest concern is the the limitation.
Mind standing up just so I'm having trouble hearing you. I kind of read lips, so it would help.
Okay, yeah, it's uh Debbie Seidel, thirty-seven Ridge Road. Don't have a lot of comments, just the concerns about the traffic on the road and the the narrowness of the road, but also um the speed on the road because of the of the inclination, you know, the incline. Um, it does create a problem for the walking and I'm a big walker on the street too. So I would would recommend that there be a serious um consideration around um the construction at the beginning of a Ridge Road up through the city. And um I am, again, very appreciative that the home is being restored. So thank you for, I do appreciate that that's.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Susan McGreevy?
I, um, Susan McGreevy, forty-four Ridge Road. I think everybody said pretty much what I'm thinking in this room, but I just want to just reiterate that it's such a unique neighborhood and all the houses are different. It's why we all moved in there. Um, see four more houses just popped down. I just, I'm against it.
Mrs. Krieger?
Hi, I'm Madeleine Krieger. I'm also at forty-four Ridge Road. And I'm, I am against adding four houses to the neighborhood. I think it would take away from for the reason that we all live in this neighborhood and it's quiet and people have space and there's not a lot of congestion the way that it is, if you can walk and drive, but four more houses would not be a good idea. The other thing is, I kind of look at this and think, you know, Dr. Beetz ran a GYN office out of that house and lived there and seemed to have plenty of water. So having to annex this into the city for the purpose of water makes me say that we're going to do what we don't want you to do, which is add more housing because it was by the way it was, having it in the county. So I don't think this is the neighborhood for four more houses squished into a little yard and I'm against it.
Thank you. Mr. People, Mr. People.
I had some notes here where everything's been kind of rendered redundant at this point. No, everything's been covered and I, I appreciate everybody's comments and getting to meet our Ridge Road neighbors, some for the very first time. We're at number four Ridge Road. We're way out at the end, at the other end. I guess that I would have, Portlock, can I ask the petitioner a question?
No.
Stay a minute, cat over on the way.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to make the assumption that this is single-family detached home use only. No other uses are being considered. Ignoring. Okay. That said, if this were to go through, my concerns, like I said, I had several here, they've all been addressed beautifully, by the way, wonderful comments tonight. If this were to go through, my concerns had to do with aesthetics. The architectural extension of any buildings that could extend from the mansion, from the surrounding homes, not be something that's just completely incongruous with the neighborhood. I think four is too many. The other big concern I have is traffic, but for a completely different reason. Since the renovation started on the mansion, the traffic, the entrance to Ridge Road is right by our house. As you come off a new Windsor. And that stop sign there is abused constantly by construction deliveries, tradespeople. It's bad. And there's a very heavy industrial presence there, a lot of kids, a lot of walkers, multiple school bus stops. That's just going to get worse and depending on what kind of building schedule you set up, this could drag out for a year to two years maybe. This constant construction traffic. So that's a concern at our end of Ridge. Comments about the character of neighborhood, historical aspects, all that stuff is very important to us. We walk this road all the time. We like the neighborhood the way it is. We like the historical nature of it, the character of it. Yeah, I think this would be pretty disruptive. But if this were to happen, my ask would be to perhaps buy a little additional regularity and rigor to your process and make sure this is done right and be very thoughtful about what's going to happen next. Thanks.
Thank you. These people's. Ends are common. They're tangible. Yes. Their structure.
No, there were a couple of things that.
How many people were there? Let's see if I want to hear it.
So I, I just wanted to ask Mr. Depot to clarify because I think there's some question about where the city line, I mean, the city lines are confusing. It's not our fault. These were done years and years ago by, under the mayors and councils who, who did a hodgepodge of annexations, some which made sense and some didn't. But could you just describe briefly where the city line runs through there? Because it's, it's not quite an enclave up there on the hill, but it kind of approaches it in some ways.
You're correct. It, it originally started with a property off of old New Windsor Pike, which was a Windsor Overlook subdivision of two lots. And then that then connects to the Ridge Terrace subdivision of fifteen lots. So everything from fifty-three Fitzhugh Avenue south to the cul-de-sac on both sides of that roadway is within the city of Westminster. Any properties that are on Ridge Road within that area are not, they're still in the county. So this property abuts the rear lots, which are in the city of fifty-three to fifty-one Fitzhugh Road. So portion of the side of the property, if you're looking at the property to the left and the entire rear yard property line shares a property line with properties in the city. So that's the connection. That's adjacent to, and therefore the property could be annexed into the city.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hall?
Madam Mayor. I, I just want to clarify, Mr. Depot, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. What we're here tonight about is the annexation because some of the comments I heard were good comments, but I felt like I was out of planning a zoning meeting because whatever, this is for, what my point is, correct me if I'm wrong with my process, we are here tonight, Mr. Depot, about the annexation of the property. If it is annexed in, once it is annexed in, if the applicant is pursuing any kind of subdivision of the property, that would go through a completely entirely different process that actually doesn't come before the mayor and comment council, just to be clear, but goes to our planning and zoning commission. And so I guess what I'm kind of saying, correct me if I'm wrong with anything, I just encourage everyone that's in the audience tonight that whatever happens with the annexation, but particularly if it is annexed in, and understand if it wasn't annexed in, that process could take place on the county level, okay? Where if it is annexed in, that takes place on the city level, to stay engaged in the process. Because some of the comments that having served on the Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission and actually being the ex officio or the Westminster Planning and Zoning Commission, some of the comments I heard tonight were much more about like if there was a proposed site plan, and I just want to be clear, there isn't any kind of proposed site plan. The applicants mentioned what their concept is, but there is nothing that was drawn up or submitted for consideration. So I just encourage everyone to really keep an eye on things and definitely come out if it does come to a planning and zoning meeting, whether that's at the county or here.
But yeah, you're correct. So. So I'm sorry. So you're correct. The annexation just annexes the property in the city, therefore the property itself becomes within the city limits. It does not grant any water allocation. It does not grant any development rights or any approval of development. Once annexed in the city, it would be subject to the city zoning regulations for use. And to establish a use, subdivision will use that as an example. That would have to go through a preliminary subdivision plan before the planning and zoning commission of the city as well as a final plats for that preliminary subdivision plan with a planning and zoning commission. If a bed and breakfast was proposed, that's what's called a special exception in the city. For this property, they'd have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals first to even have the right to operate a bed and breakfast at the property, followed by site plan approval with a planning and zoning commission of the city. So this again solely just adds this property within, within, within the limits of the city of Westminster.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So I just want to add on to what Councilman Huff said because there are a lot of comments this evening relative to the issue of potential subdividing in the future. That is not what we're discussing, but I just want to make sure everyone's clear. This property can be subdivided in the county. It, it doesn't have to come in the city to be subdivided. Now, that would make the water allocation a little bit more difficult to get, but not impossible. We still give water out to county use as well. It's just a lower priority. Coming into city raises the priority because we give city residents higher priority waters. But keep in mind, if we were to deny annexation, that does not stop the owner of the property from subdividing into the county. Quite frankly, it happens at the county level, which is a whole lot bigger and probably a little less focused than at the city levels. So just bear that in mind.
All right, uh, we will call this public hearing closed then at eight thirty-six PM.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Becker. Move on now with rest of your agenda. But we're back to presentations. We have one we like to review in the meeting when Dr. Julia Jaffray became president of Daniel College, she promised that she would send a member of her senior staff help meetings as often as possible, order to share a little information with us on what's going on up on the hill, the other hill. And you know, I think back to the college, we would get what's happening here in the city. So we have with us Christine Moran, special vice president, and welcome to the meeting.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we would just like to announce that we are excited about our annual city to college gen term internship program that continues for its second year. Uh, we have four applications to be interviewed by the CEO and then forwarded to the city for interview and decision-making. Uh, one student has been placed with the finance internship and another student has been asked to intern with the community planning and development department. And we just wanted to express our appreciation for this continued partnership. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks very much for coming. Any questions?
I'd just say it goes both ways, Mr. President. We appreciate it too.
Thank you very much. All right. Move on now, but next item on the agenda is council comments and discussion. Unlike video reports, this is an opportunity for council members to share any comments or concerns, the thoughts they have that are not reflected elsewhere than the council leaning agenda. Anything with Mr. Krieger?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two quick things. Number one, you know, we've got a lot going on as Councilwoman Roman Gilbert referenced in her comments. And that takes a lot of folks from city staff doing a lot of things, working very hard. For example, some of the things that transpire during the parade, some of those votes have to come in on days they typically have vacation time and work to make that happen across many departments within the city. And I think we're all very grateful for all the hard work that the staff puts in to make all of those things happen, like the skating rink and all the lights and how beautiful City of All looks and all of those things. So I wanted to just say thank you for all the hard work. And then along that same vein, I want to thank Ms. Impulse and the senior staff. They have been really working hard recently to accomplish some very large projects that have gone on. We've got our water reuse project that's about to kick off and I know Ms. Impulse has been working very late nights and burning the candle at both ends, putting in a lot of time to bring in extra money and, and get this thing across the finish line, which we're all counting on, along with all the other big projects we have going on. So I just wanted to take a minute and say thank you for Hillary for the incredible work that she's doing as well as her senior staff, because I know they all put a lot of time in and burning the candle at both ends. That's it, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kivachi. Mr. Damon?
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday, November the twenty-fifth, I represented the Carroll County Lynch Memorial Committee. I presented the soul collection for Mr. Townsend Cook at the Equal Justice Initiative in Montgomery, Alabama. Mr. Cook killed in Carroll County June second, eighteen eighty-five. In addition to the many activities mentioned by the mayor, yesterday I also had the privilege to go on the Carroll County Artist Tour. Carroll County is the home of many talented artists. It was a wonderful tour and full disclosure, I'm one of the artists displaying off-track art. Last Thursday evening, I attended Catherine's Cause. It's a solemn ceremony to remember those killed by drunk drivers. In my capacity as a fire and police chaplain, I responded to many of those incidents. This ceremony, it's me and the families in attempt to find some closure. And I joined Ms. Gilbert and Mr. Kivachi last Friday at the annual Starry Night event at Carroll Community College to celebrate the accomplishments and how much Carroll Community College adds to our community. And today I had the pleasure to sit in Westminster, the twenty-ninth Westminster Forest Street Workshop at McDaniel College. I joined eighty other horticulture and horticultural professionals from all over the state in this day-long workshop. It attracts an awful lot of talent from all over the state. It puts Westminster on the menu because we are at the forefront and we provide a lot of leadership statewide on urban forestry issues. And then finally, Mr. President, last Wednesday, I attended the Good Scout Award Ceremony honoring the work of Mr. Todd Eric. And that'll be my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hough and Ms. Gilbert.
Um, I too want to extend my appreciation to the staff for their dedication, their extra long hours over the Thanksgiving holiday. For many of us, we get the chance to sit down and have a delightful Thanksgiving meal and then we get Friday off and Saturday off and Sunday off. But I'd say probably seventy percent, if not more, of our staff just get Thanksgiving off and that's it. They don't get to enjoy the parade with their family. They don't. They don't get to go, go, you know, Black Friday shopping because they're busy, you know, dealing with the streets, dealing with the lights, dealing with the parade setup and, and being very busy to make everybody else's Thanksgiving holiday a great holiday. So a huge thank you to all of them that do that for us year after year after year. Also wanted to remind people to not to forget to shop locally downtown and if you are Rudolph Girls and you're cultivated and all the other number five stores and grocery stores in downtown. It is the holiday season and we really do appreciate all the purchases. Holiday Club Crawl is on the fourteenth, so if after all these purchases, you really want to think about Taiwan, Taiwan on, oh my gosh, how many, how much did I buy? Let me have a hair. I do that on the fourteenth. They all have designated drivers. And I wanted to thank Julia for her hospitality on Tuesday. The mayor mentioned that we all got together with McDaniel College. I don't believe that's it. Everybody else mentioned. Oh, and if you've never seen Charlie Round Christmas with the Eric Brown, Eric Brown Trio, they are no longer here this time, but next year, which is, is a delightful show.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Hall?
You know, I know people touched on staff, but one thing I will say is it was so cold at night. And I, gosh, you know, I was just in the parade, you know, and then watching it afterwards. And I was so anxious to get home and get by the fireplace. I didn't know what to do with myself. And yet our staff had to continue to be out there and they were out there beforehand. So God bless you all for that because I don't know how you get it for freezing to that. The other thing I wanted to touch on as Chair of International Affairs is our delegation dinner. I'm really proud with how well we have over recent years built our relationship, relationships with our local senators and delegates. You know, I noticed at that meeting how comfortable everybody was with each other and what a good conversation we had with each other. And that really harkens to the, all the work that we have done over the past, you know, three and a half years to really build those relationships. And, and quite frankly, how important that is to the benefit of the city of Westminster. Uh, because that enables us to, to work with Annapolis, help bring money in, but also when we had to work on water reuse and get that bill passed to allow that, those relationships matter. So I just really appreciate the collaboration among staff and the council as a whole for really working with our local delegation. And I commend them for being so good with us as well. Thank you.
I thank Mr. Hoff. I want to associate myself with what everything, everybody else said about wonderful staff. I just want a funny anecdote about that that I will add. I just want a funny anecdote about that that I will add. So I was here in City Hall, uh, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, when Ms. Gilbert and her fellows swooped into the building and decorated because we were going to have to move everything inside on Saturday because it would be too cold for the vendors to be, to be outside. And they, for the days and jobs, you know, not just in this room, but throughout City Hall, decorating and making the arrangements for this was such. I was just amazed how they came in and got it all done and brought all this stuff in. And thank you for that. I also just wanted to say, you were missing, we didn't mention that we usually do, uh, a special, uh, guest. And although she spoke during the Public Attorney Award of the Year, former delegate Nancy Stockdale, we still appreciate your former service in the city. So thank you for joining us. Um, move on now to, uh, bids. We have three bids before us this evening. Um, the first is award of a bid for Water Main Replacement Project on Road, from Han Road to Merrill twenty-seven. Ms. Impulse, you ready to bring us on this?
Thank you, sir. The main water line from the water plant feeding the distribution city is a twelve-inch water main on Maryland Route twenty-seven. This is a cast iron main that was originally installed in the nineteen sixties. We have multiple breaks on this line that have caused severe damage to the road. The main is scheduled to be replaced in three phases, and the first phase is Han Road at Maryland twenty-seven. This work includes replacement of the two eight-inch cast iron mains on Han Road. They will be replaced with one twelve-inch main. This will improve hydraulic flows in the distribution system. The project was advertised on the E. Maryland Marketplace with the pre-bid meeting and bid due dates of September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, and October seventh, two thousand twenty-four, respectively. ECM Corporation was the contractor who completed the, sorry, the bids came in at Guyer Brothers, Inc., one million, four hundred fifteen thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars, and ECM Corporation, one million, three hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. ECM Corporation was the contractor who completed the main street water replacement project. Based on our experience with that project, city staff have concerns about ECM's capacity to complete the work on Han Road and twenty-seven water main replacement project in an efficient and responsible manner. Therefore, city staff had determined that Guyer Brothers submitted the most responsive and responsible bid. The fiscal year twenty-five capital budget funding for this project is one million, five hundred sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Staff recommends that the mayor and common council accept the bid for Guyer Brothers, Inc., in the total amount of one million, four hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred, sorry, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the water main replacement project at Han Road and Maryland Route twenty-seven. Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you, Ms. Impulse. Uh, let's get this properly before us. We have a motion to approve the award of the bid.
Motion to approve.
The motion by Ms. Gilbert, is there a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Dayhoff. You've all heard Ms. Impulse and seen the staff report. There's also a memo from our finance director, Ms. Rogers, uh, from the funding for this. Any questions?
Mr. President.
Uh, yes, or comments, Mr. Roff?
Ms. Impulse, just to refresh my memory, I know, I'm sure you discussed it with us, but just refresh my memory. So this is the first of a, a multi-phase replacement. Is that correct?
It is.
Yes. So the, the next phase is that in future capital years?
It is.
Okay, gotcha. So this is all for this capital year related to this particular project?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roff. Any other questions or any other comments?
Um, Mr. President.
Ms. Gilbert.
So this is the first phase and it is, it starts at Han Road and twenty-seven. Do we know the part?
I do. So if I'm going to give you a non-technical answer.
I'm, I'm good with non-technical answers.
On Route twenty-seven, it starts from about to the middle of where the pork and beans property is, and it goes down to Mr. Tyer. Hmm, so a very short segment. And then it's going to go across Han Road and tie over from the intersection of Han and twenty-seven over to Random House. That is phase one.
Okay. And then phase two and phase three eventually end up up to the reservoir. Is that the idea? Or I'm just curious.
Yep. Fair question. Phase two is on twenty-seven from Han to Tuck. So it's a much longer section. Phase through three is in a dream phase that I think goes from somewhere over to the water plant. I'm not sure whether we'll really get there, but let's put it in the dream phase and then hopefully we can get it on the books sometime or another.
Okay. And, and then I guess I may need a follow-up question. So phase two, when it is time for that phase two, we'll kind of throw that into the budget, that planning idea for?
Phase two engineering is in the current year budget and will likely go to bid sometime in the near future. We also have received, um, an earmark from the twenty-twenty-three federal budget, which has provided, hopefully, all of the money for phase two, but we won't know that till we finish engineering and then go to bid. At that point, we'll know the real number of how much phase two costs and we'll, I'll know how much more we'll need for that. Probably we're not definitely, we won't need that in this budget year, the construction funds for that. So to answer your question, Ms. Gilbert, we will put the, an estimate for the gap financing between the existing grant that we have and whatever we think that the rest will be in next year's budget. So you'll see that in these upcoming budget discussions.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Krawachi.
Only because we have quite a few people who live in and out of the city, I want to make this comment. This is coming out of the city water fund, which is across all water users, not just city residents. So this isn't being paid for out of our, our general fund. This is being paid for out of our water fund, which, uh, again, comes out of all the users of the system, not just folks that live within the city. So, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Krawachi.
Oh, good to meet you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing none, further discussion, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, we're awarding the bid for water, water main, water main replacement project on Road to Merrill twenty-seven. Please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the, um, bid is approved. Thank you.
And just, Mr. President, just to be clear for the minutes, we are approving the Guyer, Guyer Brothers bid, because I don't think anyone specifically said that.
It was, it was, it was a.
Yeah.
That don't get a project for a day, that's what I said.
Well, I meant the two, because.
We haven't gotten to the second.
Yeah, I, I was.
Um, I think my staff report mentioned that.
Yeah.
That's on file.
Um, next item is award of bid to Guyer Brothers Incorporated for Phase Six, the Inflow and Infiltration I N I Project, in the total amount of one million, two hundred thirty thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars. Ms. Impulse?
Thank you, sir. The city's adopted fiscal year twenty-five C I P budget allocates funding for repairing the sewer collection system due to inflow and infiltration, which we call I N I. Phase six is for televising sewer mains that are greater than fifteen inches in diameter. The city's current equipment only allows for televising up to fifteen inches. These mains have not been televised since the nineties, and due to their location with it, within easements, have had very minor maintenance performed. After cleaning and televising, the contractor will submit the videos and recommend repairs for the city to review. The project was advertised on the E. Maryland Marketplace with a pre-bid meeting and bid due dates of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, respectively. The, the city received three bids. The lowest bid was from Guyer Brothers in the amount of one million, two hundred thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. City staff has reviewed and evaluated references and the proposal from Guyer Brothers and finds it to be acceptable with regard to the city's need. The fiscal year twenty-five capital budget funding for this project is one million, three hundred thousand. Staff recommends that the mayor and common council accept the bid of Guyer Brothers in the amount of one million, two hundred thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars for Phase Six of the I N I Project. That concludes my reports.
I mean, thank you, Ms. Impulse. I had a motion on the award of the bid to Guyer Brothers for Phase Six of the I N I Project. I'll move to award, Mr. President. The motion by Mr. Krawachi, is there a second?
No, second.
Uh, second by Mr. Roff, second, fraction of second, Mr. President. Um, mayor, do you want to, to comment?
Yeah, uh, Ms. Impulse, there's a, between the three bids, there was quite a price difference for the mobile dredging, like video, video pipe of about five to sixty million dollars in difference.
Yes.
Was that due to, do you know what that was due to?
I do not.
He's a gold-pleating tamra.
Right. Oh, all right.
Well, you hit some, sometimes they just bid just because they got something out there, they'll even.
Particularly didn't. They're going to get lucky.
Any, any, uh, any additional questions or comments on this?
Mr. President.
Mr. Krawachi.
Just briefly, this is, while not inexpensive, it ultimately saved us a lot of money and had a lot of unnecessary inflow into our water treatment system, which taxes that system significantly. We found some real value in doing this kind of work. It's, it's somewhat preventative maintenance that ultimately pays for itself many times over. Um, so while it's a decent amount of money that we'll be spending, it will ultimately, long-term, save us a significant amount more than this.
And what?
And it'll save us water as well, or in this case, water that needs to be treated.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, awarding this bid to Guyer Brothers for Phase Six of the I N I Project. Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the bid is awarded to Guyer Brothers. Uh, the final item is award of bid to Shoreline Mechanical LLC for replacement of the H-track units for forty-five West Main Street, which is city administration currently, and water treatment and building. Yeah, Ms. Impulse?
It's me again. The city's adopted fiscal year twenty-five C I P budget allocates funding for evaluation and replacement of the H V A C units on the city administration building at forty-five West Main Street and on the city cranberry water treatment plant building. The project was advertised on E. Maryland Marketplace with a pre-bid meeting and bid due dates of November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, and December second, two thousand twenty-four, respectively. The city received three bids. Lowest bid was from Shoreline Mechanical LLC with a total bid cost of four hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars. City staff have reviewed and evaluated references and the proposal for Shoring Mechanical in the total amount of four hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars and finds it to be acceptable with regard to the city's need. The fiscal year twenty-five budget, capital budget allocates four hundred and ninety-five thousand for replacement of the H V A C units at forty-five West Main Street and seventy-four thousand for replacement of the H V A C unit at the water treatment plant building. Staff recommends that the mayor and common council accept the bid of Shoring Mechanical in the total amount of four hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars for evaluation and replacement of the H V A C units at forty-five West Main Street and the water treatment plant building. And I will say, you may remember during budget year, we tried to combine some projects in order to get the best bid price possible. This is the, one of those projects. So instead of bidding one, one year, and one in the next year, we put them both together in a request for you, um, to put them both in the budget this year. I think that this seems to be, while we didn't expect it to come in in this order, this is under budget and this is one of the reasons why we tried to, uh, combine these projects together. Mr. President, that concludes the staff report.
All right, very good. Thank you, Ms. Impulse. I have a motion on the, uh, awarding of bid.
I have a motion to award it.
A motion by Ms. Gilbert, is there a second?
What second?
Second by Mr. Dayhoff. Uh, any further discussion or any questions for Ms. Impulse?
Ms. Impulse, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Impulse, Mr. President. Uh, Ms. Impulse, um, they, when we replace it at forty-five West Main, this will like address some of these issues that we're having with climate control, like, for example, the downstairs conference room in the summer time, like it's too hot and all that, right?
Believe it or not, it may not. What this is going to do is ensure that there's air conditioning in the building. Um, the issue about what temperature various locations in the building are at cannot be even evaluated until we've replaced the H V A C unit in the building. You may recall, a year or two ago, we replaced the boiler in the building that ensured that we have heat. This is going to ensure that we have air conditioning. The final step, if we choose to go that route, um, to try to ensure more efficiency within the building, um, will be to evaluate sort of the duct work and, and where the controls are. But we cannot do that, and so we've taken this step first.
So, well, let's, then let me ask a follow-up question. But the equipment that we're putting in should be able to be compatible with the, whatever additional duct work or equipment that we need to be able to accomplish some of that climate control in some of the various rooms.
Yes, we think so. We brought in as many people to look at the system as we can bring in without spending too much money on the matter. Um, we think at this point, once we replace these units, it will become an internal problem with how the duct work, et cetera, is, um, set up within the building and not necessarily one where we would then have to replace additional equipment, such as the boiler or H V A C.
Okay, that's what I was curious about. Because that one room in the summer time is pretty hot. Okay, thank you.
Because we all talk too much.
Uh, well, that can be true, too, Mr. President.
Any, any further comments or discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Gilbert.
I just wanted to make a comment that I'm very happy that all these bids are coming under, you know.
That was a plain nice, nice trend on the senior channel, yeah.
Yeah. You better.
Say it's more than you like. All right. Hearing no further discussion, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, awarding the bid to Shoreline Mechanical LLC for replacement of the H V A C units, H V A C units for forty-five West Main and the water treatment plant buildings, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the bid is awarded to Shoreline Mechanical. Thank you. All right. Move on now to ordinances and resolutions. We have four items before us this evening. The first is adoption of an annexation resolution number twenty-four dash ten, Annexation Number Seven, Amendment Plan. The Annexation Plan for Certain Property Contiguous To, Entering the City's Existing Corporate Boundaries Located at one thousand one Baltimore Boulevard, Westminster, Maryland, two-one-one-five-seven, Containing Plus or Minus Six Point Two Four Two Six Acres, and Also Identified as Tax Account Number zero-seven dash zero-two-seven-six-two-one, MAP zero-zero-four-six, grid zero-zero-one-six, Parcel Zero Six Nine Three, Which Property Is the Subject of Petition for Annexation Submitted by the Owners of a Portion of the Subject Property to the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster. Mr. DePauw, anything you'd like to add from earlier this evening?
No, not at all. I just wanted to provide staff's recommendation that be for the mayor and common council to adopt the Annexation Plan Resolution twenty-four-ten, approving the Annexation Plan for Annexation Seventy-Eight, High Falcon Realty Corp. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. DePauw. And a motion on, uh, adoption of the Annexation Resolution.
Mr. President.
You're all the person.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion for the adoption of Annexation Resolution Number twenty-four-ten.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roff. Is there a second, Mr. Dayhoff?
Yes, sir.
Uh, second by Mr. Dayhoff. Any further discussion or comments on this? Hearing none, move on to a vote. All those in favor of adoption of Annexation Resolution Number twenty-four dash ten, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the Annexation Resolution is adopted. Next item is adoption of Annexation Resolution Number twenty-four dash zero-nine, Annexation Number Seventy-Eight, High Falcon Realty Corp, enlarging the corporate boundaries of the city of Westminster by annexing certain property containing plus or minus six point two four two six acres contiguous to and adjoining the city's existing corporate boundaries, consisting of real property located at one thousand one Baltimore Boulevard, Westminster, Maryland, two-one-one-five-seven, also identified as tax account number zero-seven dash zero-two-seven-six-two-one, MAP zero-zero-four-six, grid zero-zero-one-six, Parcel Zero Six Nine Three. Mr. DePauw?
Thank you. And staff recommends that the mayor and common council adopt Annexation Resolution twenty-four oh-nine, approving Annexation Number Seventy-Eight for How, High Falcon Realty Corp.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the Annexation Resolution?
Motion to adopt the Annexation Resolution.
The motion by Mr. Dayhoff, is there a second?
I will second, Mr. President.
Second by Mr. Roff. Any questions or discussions on this? Hearing none, move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the Annexation Resolution is approved. Next item, item C, Adoption of Annexation Resolution Number twenty-four dash zero-seven, Annexation Number Thirty, Annexation Plan. The Annexation Plan, For Certain Property Contiguous To and Joining the City's Existing Corporate Boundaries Located at Fifty-four Ridge Road, Westminster, Maryland, two-one-one-five-seven, Containing Plus or Minus Two Point Five Zero Five Acres, and Also Identified as Tax Account Number zero-seven dash zero-one-one-nine-eight-nine, MAP zero-zero-four-five, grid zero-zero-six, Parcel Zero One Six Seven, Which zero-seven dash zero-one-one-nine-eight-nine, map zero-zero-four-five, grid zero-zero-six, parcel zero-one-six-seven, which property is the subject of a petition for annexation submitted by the owners of a portion of the subject property to the mayor and common council of Westminster. Mr. Deep?
Thank you. Again, staff recommends that the mayor and common council adopt annexation plan resolution twenty-four oh-seven, approving the annexation plan for annexation number eighty, Maryland Home Builders LLC.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Deep. All right, we have a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we continue of annexation twenty-four oh-seven along with the subsequent, the following, uh, resolution twenty-four oh-six, uh, to a future meeting, or at least our, our, our next meeting, which will be sometime in January. It was all an opportunity to digest all the testimony that we heard there here this evening lately.
Well, wait.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Rogers. I forgot that we're gonna do that after.
That's right, we're gonna do that. Right. So I think your motion is actually to postpone consideration to the next regular meeting of the mayor and common council.
Correct.
All right, well, thank you. All right. So Mr. Kabachi's made a motion, postponed consideration, you know, until the next meeting of the mayor and common council, which will begin, you know, it will be January thirteenth. Is there a second, Mr. Kabachi?
I will second that motion.
All right.
I'll defer to Mr. Hoff.
There is a half a second. Your motion. Now, Mr. Kabachi, now, this motion is debatable only to the extent that you're discussing the motion for postpone, not the merits of the actual annexation branch.
Yes, sir.
If you'd like to make any comments.
I'd just like to mention that the reason I'd like to do this is because a lot of testimony this evening, right, it was an opportunity to adjust that, do more research, uh, and come more educated on January thirteenth.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Kabachi. Do you have other comments on the motion itself? Hearing none, we want to vote. All those in favor of, um, adopting Mr. Kabachi's motion to postpone further consideration until the next, uh, regular meeting of the mayor and common council on January thirteenth, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the motion is adopted. Next item is adoption of annexation resolution number twenty-four dash zero-six and annexation thirty, Maryland Home Builders LLC, enlarging the corporate boundaries of the city of Westminster by annexing into the city's certain properties containing plus or minus two point five zero-five acres contiguous to and adjoining the city's existing corporate boundaries consisting of real property located at fifty-four Ridge Road, Westminster, Maryland, two-one-one-five-seven, also identified as tax account number zero-seven dash zero-one-one-nine-eight-nine, map zero-zero-four-five, grid zero-zero-zero-six, parcel zero-one-six-seven. Um, Mr. Deep?
Thank you. Well, as this resolution twenty-four oh-six is directly tied to annexation resolution, um, twenty-four oh-seven, staff recommend that the mayor and common council consider continuing, uh, resolution twenty-four oh-six to the January thirteenth mayor and common council meeting.
Mr. President.
Ms. Inhols.
I may have misheard, but I thought council member Kabachi, um, specifically referenced both, uh, resolution twenty-four oh-seven and twenty-four oh-six in his motion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kabachi, was that your motion?
I did, but that's okay. I'm having to make a second motion.
Sorry, Mr. Robert.
He did the first, he did both of them, but, but I would, since he's already, they continued it, I would do a motion just to wrap that one.
No, I think, I think we're just going to continue on. All right.
I would certainly not question your knowledge of.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed what you said, but I apologize for that, thank you. Since we are already at this point, I mean, it's, we're, we're, there's no objection, we're going to do a second. All right. All right. So, Mr. Kabachi, I take it the motion is the same for?
Mr. President, I'd like to move, we continue this to the January thirteenth.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Dayhoff, a second of the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote on Mr. Kabachi's motion to, uh, postpone further consideration of this to the January thirteenth meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and, uh, we say we will take this up at the, uh, next regular meeting. Thank you. There's going to be unfinished business before the council. I'm not aware of any unfinished business. Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. There are additional new business waiting for the council. It's not on the agenda. Hearing none, we will move on to departmental reports. Ms. Inhols, let's take a seat.
I will. Thank you, sir. I want to take a moment to thank the council and the mayor for your kind comments to staff. I certainly echo those. Um, the staff on Saturday of the event were so cold, I understand, for so, so, so many hours. Um, I, so I appreciate you mentioning that, and I, I will make sure to let them know as well. Um, I had an opportunity on Saturday to be driving in the main street area, and I saw the horse-drawn carriage drive by with the, a wagon full of people and was able to see the line for the next round waiting as well. And I just, it is such a cool thing to have in this small town. Um, so thank you, Ms. Gruber, and to the rest of the staff that organized the many, 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 many holiday events that we had. Um, the reason that we've put these items in the budget and that we focus so much on that, of course, is to bring, um, dollars down to the main street area, and I've heard from several businesses this month specifically that their, uh, revenues have, that they've seen a jump in the revenue specifically related to, that they think is related to some of the events that we've had downtown. So I haven't seen any quantifiable numbers related to that, but I just want to make sure that we're remembering why we're doing these cool things down here, which is to support, to support our local businesses on the streets. All right, Ms. Gruber, what have you got for us today from the Recreation and Parks Department?
I'll keep this brief. Uh, it took a lot of time at the beginning of the meeting, and you have been so very kind in your comments about the events that occurred, uh, miracle mains, on Main Street and beyond, the Saturdays throughout December. So thank you so much. So I would just like to say, uh, happy holidays to all of you. I know this is our last council meeting, um, before the holidays occur, so, um, just extending on behalf of the Recreation and Parks Department, our truest wishes for fabulous holiday season to not just council, but to my fellow staff members and to residents as well. Um, we truly enjoy bringing these events to our downtown, um, because we want to assure that your quality of life is, um, the best that it can be here in the state of California. So thank you so much. And with that, I'll conclude because I'm sure everybody is ready to get up here.
Are there any questions for the Recreation and Parks Department? Hearing none, we will move on to the Public Works Department. I have two quick items for you. Uh, the first is, it's been all hands on deck with the water reuse project as we come to the end of that bidding process. Um, there've been a lot of questions that we've had to answer to the bidders. We're very excited to open those bid and present those to you, to the mayor and common council. Um, there are a lot of funding sources in this project, and that's a lot of requirements related to those funding sources. Uh, so we have been, as I just mentioned, all hands on deck preparing for all of that. I want to take a moment to thank the Public Works Department, um, the Utilities Department, the Streets Department, Water and Wastewater volunteer for the holiday events. Um, they sometimes are behind the scenes for some of this, and I just want to take a moment to thank them. Are there any questions for the Public Works Department? Hearing none, we'll move on to the I T Department. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. I'll keep it brief. Uh, once again, happy holidays, everybody. Yeah, we'll, we won't see each other probably, or officially even for the next holiday, so happy holidays, everybody. And just a reminder, in both work and home, we're seeing a large uptick in attacks from other agencies, other people around the state, where it's either spoof emails, or we're getting things where, like, making an account compromise, and we get a ton of viruses or things trying to feed into our home and our work accounts. If you get an email from somebody, even if you know that person, question it if you want to expand it, especially if it's an attachment or a link that you're not sure of, just don't blindly click this because you know the person. Uh, our, our users are awesome. They've done a really good job of bringing to our attention if something makes it through. Like, as we call them all, but just two diligence. If you see something, you know, don't forget, you know, don't hesitate to ask if you have a question, because it's what they're for as well.
Are there any questions for the I T director? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Planning Department.
One, one day, I'd like to be to say those words. This will be brief, but. Um, on December.
Today.
On December fourth, the Historic District Commission reviewed the architectural elevations with a new Shepherd Staff Building at thirty Carroll Street, which is located in the Historic District, and provided a favorable recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The H D C also discussed the planning of the nation's twenty-fifth, two-fiftieth anniversary. On December nineteenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission is tentatively scheduled to hold a work session for local map amendment L M A twenty-four oh-two for the A one urban living condominium located at two-two-two East Green Street. Uh, I think the mayor and common council will ultimately be pleased by the number of work sessions and the final product that will be for the mayor and common council for this development. So I think it's been worthwhile to go through this exercise. Um, Planning Commission is also, uh, tentatively scheduled to review Site Development Plan S twenty-three thirty-six for the Shepherd Staff, uh, development to construct a five thousand seven hundred and eighty-six square foot, two-story community center meeting hall building on point two-eight acres at thirty Carroll Street. Also, Site Development Plan two-seven, S eighteen thirty-seven, My Canine Buddy, this has been ongoing for quite some time, to construct a forty thousand square foot indoor dog training and event facility on five point four-two acres on lot five A of the Meadow Branch Industrial Park subdivision. This is located approximately two hundred and thirty feet southwest of the Meadow Branch Road and Curtis Church intersection. Also, McDaniel Overlook subdivision plat, this is subdividing a one point two-seven acre parcel located approximately one hundred and fifty feet northeast of the Lower Field Circle and Wind Trist Drive intersection. Uh, the subdivision is for two new lots to construct single-family detached dwelling units on each lot. On January seventh meeting, um, of the Board of Zoning Appeals, they are scheduled to hear the continued B Z A case number twenty-four oh-five, an appeal to the zoning administrator's June eleventh, twenty twenty-four decision regarding signage at three oh-one East Main Street in the city of Westminster to the B Z A, and also B Z A case number twenty-four oh-eight, an appeal of the zoning administrator's September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, initial notice of violation for two seventy-nine East Main Street for the unapproved operation of retail sales establishment at the property, the installation of unapproved signage at the property, and the illegal use of city sidewalk. And that completes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions for the Planning Directors?
Mr. President.
What?
So, two twenty-two, um, East Green, how many units does that can end up being as far as the proposed plan?
At the proposal now, it's a four-story, sixty-four-unit, uh, condominium owner-occupied, uh, development.
Are all the units the same, or is there going to be some variance in terms of bedrooms, size?
Essentially, half of one bedroom, another half, the other fifty percent are two-bedroom units.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Inhols, I just want to commend, uh, Mr. Deep and our Planning Commission because we've been doing a lot of back and forth with that particular project, and we're kind of finding, Mr. Deep, but we're kind of finding our way, uh, as a planning commission to kind of how to work session this stuff. But what I think that eventually, when it comes to the mayor and common council, you will see from a work product standpoint, and, Mr. Deep, we should definitely show them the original elevation compared to the elevation that we end up to of all the effort and work that has gone on behind the scenes with staff and different members of the Planning and Zoning Commission to, so that when it comes up to this level, you have a really good product to look at. Um, and I think that's great because that's kind of how we want our commissions and, and could even our council committees to work with the proving grounds that when it comes up to, to this point, that we got a really good product. Um, so I, I just want to commend all the efforts involved in that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. So we'll move on to the Finance Department. Uh, we are working hard to close out the audit, and believe it or not, we're getting ready to start the budget process, which will begin in a couple of weeks. Um, so any questions for the Finance Department? I know you're, I can see through your faces, you're all very excited about the budget process.
I will make one comment. I, I've, I've said it again, it's a shame that, uh, Teresa is not here tonight, but Ms. Rogers is, I love the budget memos. So keep those coming, because I, I like having them in the package.
I'm glad to hear that. Thanks.
Definitely. So please compliment her for the time that she takes in preparing them.
I will. All right. Hearing no other questions, we will move on to the Housing Department. Mr. Brown?
Thank you. The two items I just want to bring to the council and mayor and, and everybody in the audience. The past week, I had an opportunity to take a look at the code enforcement activity for the past six months. I noted that there were a hundred and thirteen code violations identified either through complaints from the city or the code enforcement officer doing patrols. And here's how it breaks down. Twenty percent, I mean, twenty-one percent of the complaints were related to weeds and grass. Uh, but the one percent were for, uh, little housing license, that he was not having a little housing license. And twelve percent related to vehicles. And ten percent of that number related to sanitation-related issues. And then the rest were just other general types of things such as tree trimming trees or tree removal. With respect to the housing trust voucher program over the past six months, we've averaged two hundred and eighty-three units, I mean, vouchers under lease per month. So we'll keep, we have two hundred and ninety-seven, uh, total vouchers, two hundred and eighty-three we keep on the lease. But we have to do a balancing act with the number of vouchers we can issue or we, we, uh, recertify in relationship to the amount of budget. So we have to kind of keep that balanced. All in all, I think we're doing pretty good with respect to keeping our, our vouchers at a good level. You will also note that we have reopened the waiting list, and we're starting to see activity come in in terms of people. I think the word is getting out to, to a number of people through various organizations that the waiting list is open. So we're, we're excited about that. Lastly, I want to take this opportunity, since this is our last official meeting for the year, take this opportunity to wish everybody a happy holiday, whether that holiday is Christmas, whether that holiday is Hanukkah, or whether that, uh, that, uh, Lucy. At Christmas, then there's one of. So just, well, with the given opportunity to do that, and thank you for all of your support during this, this year. Really do appreciate everything you've done for our department. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Are there any questions for the Housing Director?
Mr. President, one quick thing. Um, again, we've got a lot of folks here in the audience, and I just want to make sure there's some clarity relative to our housing vouchers. That is not city money that pays those vouchers. That's state and federal money. We just act as the fiduciary managing it. It's a choice we made a long time ago. Take one, that responsibility, because it gives us local control over those vouchers versus allowing them to be controlled outside of the city. Uh, but again, it's not, not money that comes from city taxpayers that funds those vouchers. That's state and federal money that we, we manage. Just want to make sure that's pointed out, since we have folks in the audience that probably don't necessarily know that.
Thank you, Mr. Kabachi.
Yep.
Hearing none, we will move on to the Police Department. I want to take a moment to thank the Police Department and all of the officers, sworn officers, and the communications staff who have to work on the holidays, um, not just the events that we do, but the actual holidays themselves. And I just want to thank them for, um, the work that they do when they're here away from their families during that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Again, the mayor and council, I'd like to echo the sentiment that your staff have, uh, brought forth for happy holidays to everyone. Um, to build on what Mr. Moore was saying, uh, the, the spoofs and scams have gotten so sophisticated. Um, I was told that, uh, somebody received a voicemail from Officer Led L of the Carroll County Police Department, um, essentially making a threat for some type of action unless, you know, certain, uh, money was produced. No law enforcement agency is ever going to call and do that. Um, so the best course is to hang up, and, uh, you can always call the Police Department to verify, uh, the calls or follow-up, but they're, the scams are sophisticated on email, on text message. Don't click links. Um, I know it's kind of a, um, sad state of affairs, but, uh, they are becoming more and more sophisticated. So you're better, uh, being safe than sorry, and can always call the, um, um, the actual corporation, look up the number and, and verify something if you're ever in doubt, and if it's legit, then they'll be happy to, uh, re-communicate with you. Um, we're, we're also pairing, um, again, this year with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office to do our holiday patrols. Through the holiday season, they'll commence through the end of the year, where we have extra patrols in our, um, uh, store areas, both on one forty and around downtown Main Street. Uh, we do it both in vehicle and on foot and, and do walkthroughs through the stores. Um, I also want to bring up the fact that our patrol officers did an exceptional job at de-escalating a suicidal individual who had a hand. at de-escalating a suicidal individual who had a handgun um over the weekend. So kudos to them. And our officers and our detectives are continuing to do a good job to investigate, identify, and charge individuals in groups that are doing the regional shoplifting thefts, uh primarily along Route one-forty, but occasionally in town. Um, they've done a really good job working, they're a member of this commercial uh retail intel group that we share information with our counterparts in the region, and they've done a really good job at um identifying and charging those individuals. And that'll conclude my report. I share any questions?
Are there any questions for the chief? I want to take an opportunity to thank the staff and wish them a very um happy holidays, and to all of you, mayor council, wish you very happy holidays. Next, police department will report.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Zimols. The final item on our agenda, believe it or not, we have our final agenda. The citizen comments when we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda and any other city issues. If the citizen is not attending the public meeting, we invite you to send us your comments or concerns via email at comments@westminstermd.gov. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. We ask commenters to please include their address and phone number with their comments. We'll now invite comments from anyone who's present this evening. And this is a final opportunity for the public to share their thoughts and concerns with the mayor and council. Once again, anybody who wishes to speak, we invite you to be brief. Tell anyone who wishes to be heard this evening. All right. Hearing no one, uh, thank you all for staying for this extended civics lesson. That concludes our agenda and meeting. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, January thirteenth. I want to note that the council will not have its regular meeting on the fourth Monday of this month, December twenty-third, uh because of the holiday season, but if necessary, and without objection, uh, we, this council will meet at the call of the chair. And we need to be there for the And with that, I hope everyone is able to celebrate the holidays with their family and friends that are in Jersey time, and so without objection, we are.